Calling the Norfolk Public School Committee meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, August 20th, 2004. I'll start the meeting, as we do all our meetings, by reading our mission statement. "The Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. Through school, family, and community partnerships, we provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world." You have a real call?
Peter Schwalbe.
Lauren Vivas.
Grace Lockheck.
Madora Champagne.
Lisa Sheldon.
Ingrid Allardyce.
Victoria Salada.
LaFalle.
We start with our public comment. Do I see anyone here who wants to speak tonight? No. Moving to correspondence, there are two items in your packet. One is a memorandum of understanding between the CPAC and the Norfolk School Committee. We'll probably talk about this when we talk about liaisons a little further down. I spoke with Kayla and Mike about it afterwards, and really what they were trying to do with it was just kind of give their vision of what they thought a good liaison and school committee relationship would look like. So you can probably revisit that when we go through the liaisons and the chair report. And then the second correspondence we got was a letter from Tyis Hickman, and she was concerned about the offerings of the preschool, saying that what is offered is extremely limited in the number of hours, and she was encouraging us to increase staffing, increase the offerings. And I did write her back, and I let her know that I agree, because I think the preschool is one of the most fabulous places my kids have ever been in, and they both got to go through it, and I wish every kid could, but we are just constrained by number-one space. We don't have any space in our buildings and revenue. So I did write her back and let her know that, but we did include her letter into the public record. She made good points. I wish, like I said, we could offer preschool to everyone, because it's such a great program. Any questions on that at all?
Agreed.
Moving to the chair report, I'm going to take it a little out of order, and I'm going to start with number four and recognize our retirees first. Thank you. I'm going to start with Mrs. Burns, who isn't here tonight, but everyone knows Mrs. Burns. The HOD front office is one of the most happy places in our school, so I just wanted to talk a little bit about Paula. She has been a beloved and indispensable H Olive Day School family member since 2006. She began as an assistant in HOD's integrated preschool program, working with other staff members to create a positive and inclusive environment. Her kindness, skill, and reassuring presence nurtured an environment where students thrived. Paula brought those same invaluable skills to the front office when she joined the staff in 2015, where she became the face of HOD with her generous heart, accommodating nature, and clever sense of humor. Her dedication and kindness enabled her to know all 500 students by name. Daily, Paula quietly and efficiently executed the myriad tasks that kept our school days operating smoothly, warmly greeting visitors with her beautiful smile, making informative and entertaining school announcements, and keeping HOD dismissal running like clockwork. With kindness and empathy, she quickly reassured parents, nurtured anxious students daily, and responded to the needs of staff. Paula is a true and genuine friend to her HOD family, always providing a listening ear and a heartfelt encouragement. Paula looks forward to her retirement and spending time, many cherished hours, with her family. And she will be missed whenever I saw her. She knew not only my name, my kids' names, and my kids' classroom teachers. She was amazing, and she was...
And as Lisa said, Paula couldn't be here tonight. She is away, but we will make sure that the school committee gifts are brought to Paula when she returns, and as I would just echo, that she will be dearly missed. A wonderful, calm, kind, open-hearted presence in the H Olive Day office, which was cherished by many, so we will miss her.
Next, we'd like to recognize Ms. Carolyn Kelly, our H Olive Day School Adjustment Counselor. Carolyn has been a vital presence in our HOD school family for 16 years. With her dedication and compassionate spirit, she has touched countless lives, leaving an edible mark on them. From her love for Diet Coke, to her bright smile and pleasant personality, she always brought warmth and positivity to every interaction. Her flexibility and ability to provide comfort have made her a true friend to all. Carolyn's efforts in organizing Unity Day, Eyes and Hives, and Kindness Week have fostered a true sense of belonging and understanding within our school community. Her commitment to supporting partner lessons in our Eye Care Program has helped nurture empathy and compassion among our students. Moreover, your creation of friendship groups and lunch bunches has been a highlight for our students. Through these gatherings, you have provided a space for connection and friendship and cultivated a sense of belonging and acceptance. Carolyn's ability to listen without judgment and offer guidance with empathy has made her a trusted friend to everyone. Carolyn is looking forward to spending many happy hours with her family during retirement. We wish her the best.
I just want to say thank you to all of you. This has been a long, wonderful 16-year ride. And I started in high school and somehow ended in elementary school, but it's just been amazing. And one thing I always hope is the kids left knowing all their feelings are okay, and that they had some power, and that they knew they could do something whether it's to ask an adult or take a breath. So that's something I'll never stop doing, right? But it was a joy, truly a joy, to work in this community. I live here, I work here, it was all wonderful. So thank you so much for this recognition, I appreciate it.
You're the first person I ever met at HOD. I'd like to recognize Alicia Whitehead, who is the H Olive Day preschool head teacher. Alicia Whitehead has nurtured countless tiny seeds of curiosity into lifelong learners for her 30-year career in the Norfolk Schools. Her classroom was a symphony of laughter, creativity, and fun. She mastered and modeled the art of play while constantly weaving learning into every joyful moment. Over the years, her kind, caring, supportive, gentle hand ushered many families into the Norfolk District, putting them at ease, knowing they had such a kind and skilled professional, helping them through the unique preschool education process. Alicia listened carefully to students, parents, and colleagues, always showing patience and a genuine concern for others while having difficult conversations and guiding problem-solving. Alicia's leadership, intelligence, compassion, organization skills, and selfless spirit have dramatically supported many preschool professionals and administration. Alicia looks forward to where the next chapter of her life will lead her. Thank you so much.
It is not the same starting this school year without these two amazing ladies.
And I'd like to thank you guys for inviting us, and it's amazing. You know, Norfolk has been my career, and the relationships with the students, the families, and my colleagues will always hold a very special place in my heart. So thank you.
And you may go. You're welcome too, but we know you have lives now.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
And I'm going to jump back to item one under the chair report and just do a quick summer recap. As you all know, it was an eventful summer here, to say the least, filled with uncertainty, and I really wanted to take this moment to recognize all the work that the administration did during these uncertain times. Just, I made a quick list. There were two school committee meetings where almost an hour was dedicated to answering questions, multiple phone calls from me and other school committee members with questions I had or was forwarding on from others, weekly meetings with the state, several calls and meetings per week with DSC, meetings with the local superintendent task force, research calls with various superintendents to learn from their experiences with situations similar to ours, discussions with other town departments, frantic and extensive grant writing to ensure critical funding, educating stakeholders about Kinnevento and other relevant regulations, curriculum materials and research review, trying to come up with space and classrooms by having architectural design meetings, regularly communicating with the staff, planning newcomer summer orientations, and planning a committee to focus on it, posting for interviewing, hiring MLL teachers, coming up with a plan of newcomer classrooms only to be told, "No, we can't do that anymore," so coming up with a new plan and pivoting, planning and successfully executing that July 11th education forum, presenting and answering all the questions, promptly responding to parent concerns, and reviewing all the other communications that went out, and of course, just all the work that is done to maintain high levels of education for Norfolk students. Then on July 23rd, plans changed, and they said that schools most likely will not have an impact, but the work you did was recognized and appreciated, and you all did it with such grace and put so many hard hours in, that I just really wanted to let you know that you all are appreciated, and we saw everything you did, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
I don't know if anyone else wants to say anything, but...
I would also just want to say, we owe our sincere appreciation also to the Norfolk teachers who rallied and volunteered. We had many, many people come forward to serve on those committees. I have lots of teachers who were researching lessons, things they could bring into their classroom. I think it was a, as challenging as it was, I think people really rose to the occasion and did the best that we could with the situation and the information that we had. And as well as our office staff, who took lots and lots of phone calls from newspapers, reporters, the state. It really was a team effort, and I just would want to recognize everyone's part in trying to contribute to a solution, so thank you.
Thank you to everyone.
Thank you all. I know it was a lot of time. Your list just kept going on.
And this is the only thing I know about, so I'm sure. This is just the tip of the iceberg, where admin staff and teachers were just working so hard.
Vacations foregone.
Right.
It was amazing, and frankly, as a school committee member, I expected nothing less, having worked through similar scenarios in the past, but as a resident and as a parent in the school community, it made me very proud of our educational system here, and the teachers and the administration, and I thought that it was a remarkably well-executed response to something that ended up not being quite what we thought it was going to be. So thank you.
Moving on to item two. Last meeting, we had talked about liaisons to the CPAC, the PTO, and the LPAC, just trying to build more lines of communication between school committee and the school-based school partners. You know, sometimes the PTO will come once or twice, or the CPAC will come once or twice, but it would be nice to, you know, check in with them more frequently, and then maybe as we do with the subcommittee updates, have similar liaison updates, just so we can all be informed about what the various groups are doing within the schools. I know that Peter and Madora were not able to attend that meeting and wanted to discuss it further, so happy to open it back up and see what people think.
Sure. I think in reviewing that meeting and the proposal, I definitely think that there's space for that, and certainly value in that. I had kind of two buckets of discussion items, I guess. The first one has to do, just more procedurally, with the fact that I don't think LPAC is actually a school partner yet.
They aren't, and that's something that we should probably have them consider. Applying for school partnership just allows them to send information out about programs and things through school resources. So since CPAC is a partner, it might make sense. They are a regional group.
That was my next question, is that if it's a shared group with the other towns.
We're still working on kind of solidifying the leadership for the group, you know, so I think like once we have that more solid, we'll be able to take those next steps.
Yeah, I think that would be good.
So maybe in the meantime, we focus on the other two, when maybe that's more established in terms of like more district or town-related kind of thing?
Well, that was like my next bucket of concerns. I know we're referencing school-based programming, and I think that limiting it, limiting that only to the school partners who are, I don't want to exclude any other school partners, such as NCL, Norfolk Rec, NCTV, who else is there? The KP Music Association, I think, is an approved school partner. I don't want to exclude any school partners who might see value in having a liaison relationship, just because there is programming that is supported, and it may be beneficial to have someone from the school committee be a liaison with REC to have communications about programming and what programming is working and what programming is not working, and to kind of expand the scope so that we're providing equal access to all of the approved school partners.
I think that's a good idea, personally. Because I think too, that some groups might say, "Yes, I want all in, and I want to talk with you once a month before your meetings, and have regular check-ins," and others might be like, "We'll reach out to you if there's a question," and so I do think maybe having that is, if everyone's willing to do that...
Should we reach out to each of these individual, like, and organizations on the basket that are interested in that dynamic, or I'm just curious, like, organizationally, how do we include everybody, or just kind of open it up and like reach out?
We have about, I think it's eight school partners, eight active school partners.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. The ones on the website are current.
Yep. So we have eight school partners. I do think, I think that's a great idea, to have a designated person to go to if you have something that you want to share. I think some groups will probably have more activities, so you might want to think about having like a set designated liaison for PTO, CPAC, LPAC, and maybe having one person do REC, Lions, and, do you know what I mean? Because they'll be less frequent, but if it is helpful, we could reach out to these groups and just say, you know, "We're going to have a school committee liaison that you can, would you want to be assigned with a direct contact person, should you have a need?" And then we could divvy that up at the next meeting, if you, if that makes sense.
Or just have someone who's, who's in that role if they ever want. I mean, it doesn't have to be a, it doesn't seem like these are highly structured.
Yeah.
There's no vote, there's no, you know, I mean, it's not, nothing is set in stone, it's just if you want to have a communication with the school committee and you're not sure who to reach out to, and you don't think it's a Ingrid slash leadership conversation, you know, reach out to this person, and this person, you know, is your designated person.
So maybe have a designated rep for PTO and CPAC, and one for school partners? Is that what you're thinking for other school partners?
One for school partners, or divvy up the school partners, or, I mean, I think that, I think it's more likely than not that you'll get more communication from certain groups and not from other groups, and, you know, that's fine. Many of them have been school partners for, you know, since before I moved to town, so I think they know how the operation works and what they're doing, but just to have somebody to contact if they wanted to.
Oh, I see what you're saying. So rather than reach out, just say, "This is the person, if you have a contact, if you have a need, just call." If you don't, you don't have to. Yeah, that makes sense, too.
I like that. I just think people, more and more, have so many different forms of communication that they gravitate toward, right? So I think one more line of communication is a good thing, and some people may utilize it a lot, and some people may not, but I think more lines of communication is better, so...
So we're assigning a CPAC, a PTO, and the LPAC TBD?
Yeah, we don't have a liaison direct with the LPAC, but maybe, I think the recommendation's taking the six others, assigning a liaison, and if they choose to access it, they do. If they don't, they don't, kind of thing.
So the rest would be Lions, NCTV, NCL, Norfolk Teachers Association, Norfolk Rec, and King Philip Music Association. So Grace, were you still interested in doing the CPAC?
Yeah, if anybody, I'm open, but it is a group that I haven't worked with in the past, so always like learning new things and meeting new people.
And are you good with the memorandum you send over, just reaching out to them and walking through it, make sure you guys are seeing?
Yeah, I can do that.
Does anyone have an interest in being the liaison to the PTO? I'm happy to do it if anyone wants to. So we can divide up the rest. Do you just want me to go like through the first three?
I would happily do King Philip Music Association, which is based upon the tremendous experience both of my children have had with them, and whatever else is above that is fine, if you're going in the west.
Norfolk Recreation.
Sure.
Do you have interest in the Lions and NCTV?
Certainly.
Whatever you've got left. When we look at the school partners, is there like a contact on there?
There is, so we can put this all together and send it out.
So people can reach out.
NCL and Norfolk Teachers Association.
Perfect.
Okay, so we will put these all together, and then before next meeting, could just reach out and introduce ourselves, and I guess we don't have to say like, "We will."
Yes, we will.
But just let them know that we're here, and if they want to communicate with us in any capacity, reach out to each of you directly, just to see how they would like to do that, and then...
We could list it on the website with the partner list, could we not?
Yeah, we could put the liaison next to their partner application, too.
Administrative changes at the partners, so that we're not relying on me saying it and passing to somebody like at Dunkin' Donuts, and they forget, they can refer to that.
So it wasn't a voting item, just something that we all agree upon, because everyone feel comfortable and good about this, hoping that...
I think it'd be nice.
Yeah. All right. And the next is the superintendent's evaluation process, which we are going to start. Ingrid is going to review the progress on her stated goals later on, and then we will be sending out the superintendent's evaluation form. If you could get it to me a week before our next meeting, which is September 10th.
Cool.
So, well, okay, get it to me like four days. Can you get it to me before four days, you think? Happy to compile it.
September 10th is like two weeks from now?
Three.
One, two, three, three weeks. That was wishful thinking.
I know.
So to post if we needed.
Yeah, so we would need to post it by the 5th of September, so, and you need a couple of days probably to compile, so...
They can compile on, what is...
When should we have it to you by?
This, the 3rd of September?
Ideally, the 3rd, if I get it out to you guys tomorrow.
It's two weeks. Does that work?
If we get it out tomorrow. I'm going on vacation between school starting and school starting again, so if I can get it by then, by tomorrow, yes, I can do that.
We'll send, we can send it out tomorrow, it's a standard form.
It's the same, like, state-issued.
It's the same state-issued, so you'll evaluate progress towards goals as well as performance under each of the standards, and I will share some, a document with some links to different things that I've worked on under each of those, so that you'll have that as, happy to meet with anybody who wants to meet and discuss any of it.
Any questions or concerns on that? And then we have a vote from, we have a request from the Friends of the Norfolk Public Library. They are going to be having their annual book and bake sale, and would like to request the use of Freeman Kennedy, Tuesday, April 15th through Saturday, April 19th. And the book sale will be set up Friday evening, and then, and set, and would be Friday and Saturday, and they are requesting that they, we could post a sign in front of the library, and they would like to request a waiver of the fees associated with the use of the Freeman Kennedy School. So if we could have a motion to approve their request for a fee waiver?
We should update the years on that. It's 2024, it should be 2025.
Her letter.
Oh, yeah.
Because they submit this to us every year, I'm sure they use this form, but yes, yeah.
I didn't know if it, like, filed.
It's for September 2025, and April 18th and 19th.
April of, yes.
I move to waive the fee associated with the use of the facility by the Friends of the Public Library for their annual book and bake sale in 2025.
Second pass.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That is the end of my section, so I will hand it over to Dr. Allardyce.
So a couple of technical things first. Per the regulations, school committees approve annually the student handbook. We have the 2024 family handbook. There have been very few changes from last year, really technical changes. We've updated staff rosters, contact information, any policies that the school committee reviewed and voted on over the course of the year. We put the updated policies in the handbook. We also just went through the comprehensive tiered focus monitoring review with the state, and one of the elements that they review is our handbook. There's a lot of required information that needs to be in the handbook, and the handbook was found to be fully compliant. There were no recommendations or changes that we were asked to make as a result of that. So again, you have the handbook, it is available, last year's is available online. No major changes to highlight based on the updates for this year, so I'm looking for the school committee to vote to approve the handbook, so that we will be ready to distribute it to our families the first week of school. And I'm sure you've all seen it, because you read it and signed it as parents, too, so...
Looking for a motion to approve the 2024-2025 family handbook.
So moved.
A second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next is very similar. So our code of conduct, we had a committee work hard on this many years ago. The code of conduct really highlights our philosophy around student discipline, the proactive and preventative approaches that we have in place with our SEL programs, bullying policy regulations, and it defines the appropriate types of consequences for different kinds of disciplinary infractions. This was also, student discipline and behavior is highly regulated in the state. There's significant state legislation that, regarding suspension, that we have to be compliant with. This was reviewed through the most recent tiered focus monitoring. We were asked to change one word, which it wasn't a significant change, it was just that the intent of the word was unclear, or the grammatical piece was unclear. But other than that, it was fully compliant. We've been working with this for a number of years now. I would recommend the school committee vote to approve the updated. We've also updated the date on the cover, but really no substantive changes to this as well.
Looking for a motion to approve the 2024-2025 code of conduct.
So moved.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, school readiness update. Every August, I provide the committee with an update of where we are as we prepare to open and welcome our students back in a week. We are excited, as I'm sure most of our parents are also excited. It has been a very busy summer, as you are aware, and we've talked about earlier. It was very busy with planning and preparation in response to the opening of the Bay State Shelter, which has since been transitioned to a respite center, and as a result of that, we are not expecting enrollment, and to date have had no enrollment of students from the shelter. So that took up part of the summer in terms of planning. At the same time, we've had a lot of things going on. We've had a lot of students participate in our summer programming and in the program that we partner with the REC department on, so the buildings have been open and actively used for a good portion of the summer. Our facility staff have been working on cleaning the schools. We are in great shape. They've worked incredibly hard earlier tonight, the school committee. Some members had a tour of the building, so you can see that the floors are gleaming, the classrooms are clean. A lot of our teachers have been in, setting up their classrooms. I think the buildings are very welcoming and, and ready for opening. Our school secretaries and nurses have been enrolling and updating charts for students that are new to the district. Our business office and HR office was just humming all, it was just crazy all summer long, with different things that were going on, onboarding new staff members, end-of-year state reports, all of those kinds of things. At this time, all of our classroom teaching positions are filled, so we don't have any open positions. We do have two positions that we hired in anticipation of the newcomer students from the state shelter. We hired two additional MLL, multilingual learner teachers. The state is reimbursing the district for the costs that we incurred in planning and preparation, so they will cover the salaries of those two staff members, the stipends that we paid out for committee members that worked over the course of the summer, as well as the cost of the architectural design services that we had in anticipation of that space renovation. That said, we will be retaining those two teachers that we hired. We have been short-staffed... We have been short-staffed in our L department for a number of years because that population has been growing and so we've been tight to try to cover all of the mandated services. So one of the positions will remain as a multilingual teacher, but we will be splitting that position between Freeman and HL of Day depending on our student enrollment. The other position we are repurposing, we will be having the second L teacher cover a maternity leave and will serve as a district interventionist to provide additional support for students that might be struggling with curriculum, whether it be in English Language Arts or in math. So she'll begin the year covering a maternity leave and then will transition to a district interventionist. So that's where we are in terms of the teaching positions. We do have some open positions. We have filled since the time of this memo several of the openings that we had, so we were close to fully staffed as far as our special education instructional assistants were concerned. However, we had two assistants this week who applied for other positions in the district. So we have a new building sub and a new kindergarten assistant. So we are currently, we do have two openings for special ed instructional assistants at the HL of Day and one at the Freeman that we are actively interviewing and working to fill. We have an opening for a food service lead head cook that we are recruiting, a full-time custodian for the second shift that we are recruiting and interviewing for. We need food service assistants for our kitchens and substitute assistants. And as always, we really have been struggling to staff the SAC program. It has been a real barrier for us because of the hours that that program runs, so we need people in the morning from 7 to 9 and then again at the end of the day. We are currently, we have been advertising in multiple places and actively recruiting. We need an extended day site coordinator for the HL of Day and a site coordinator for the Freeman Kennedy School as well as an extended day assistant at the Freeman Kennedy. Tony Davis is continuing to actively work on recruitment, but that has been really challenging to fill and to expand. Our technology team, we have a technology team of three, three year-round employees. They have been working really hard. We have to every year collect back all the student equipment. It has to be cleaned, repaired, re-imaged, new programs uploaded. We have a lot of systems such as our Nutrisystem that tracks student purchases for lunch. Our curriculum programs all have to be rolled over, new accounts created, so they have been pretty straight out. We own over 700 student devices as well as new equipment that's bought over the summer. So kudos to our technology team, they have been really nose to the grindstone all summer, but I think we're in excellent shape. Equipment's been repaired, smart boards have been redistributed and I think we're in great shape for opening next week. We also have been working on the state requirement now that we have, school meals are fully funded and we have a free lunch program, we are also required to implement a free breakfast program. So we have been working with the technology team on how, strategies for how we are going to manage quickly distributing and tracking those meal sales in the morning. We have plans in place that we finalized for both schools. We're going to trial them, we'll see how they work, we may have to adjust, but we will have kiosk stations throughout, two at the Freeman Kennedy that'll be in the bandroom, I believe, and two at the HL of Day in different wings where students, when they come in in the morning, can grab a grab and go lunch, breakfast, they would eat it in the classroom and dispose of trash there. So we'll be piloting that model, but we are required to implement the breakfast program. It'll be a great service for many of our families. I know as a parent myself, sometimes getting out in the morning is tough and kids aren't hungry or, but they will have the opportunity to pick up a grab and go breakfast. So we're set with that. Enrollment has been unusual, a little bit unusual this summer, probably not surprising to anybody on the committee. We have registered 11 new students at the Freeman Kennedy and at the HL of Day, we registered 10 new students. This is really consistent with past trends. Every year, we seem to be onboarding about 10 new students. Typically, the number of students withdrawing is lower than that, so we have a net gain which is part of our annual enrollment growth. But we have had more families this year than in the past opt for private school placements. So we've had nine students at the Freeman K who've chosen a private education option and 11 at the HL of Day. I have heard this week from a couple of families that are reconsidering those decisions and re-enrolling students, so I will give an update at our next meeting at where that stands. So we will be closely monitoring that. As you know, we did add an additional first grade. We, as a result, we will not have a music room again next year at HL of Day because we needed the additional classroom, but we are well-staffed for that. Our new staff orientation is scheduled for tomorrow and we have quite a few new teachers as well as paraprofessionals coming. That day is a full day of programming, orientation to the district, district practices, expectations, code of conduct, technology, software programs, and really information about what it's like to work in Norfolk. The afternoon, our professional staff remain and they have time to meet with their mentors to talk about opening days, any questions they might have regarding curriculum, beginning of the year assessments, things like that. Our opening day for staff will be Monday, the 26th. We have some professional development and different building meetings, mandated trainings that are planned for that day. And then we are ready and excited to welcome our students on Tuesday, the 27th. Bus routes will be, it's not in this memo, bus routes will be posted next week. They are complete, we have 14 buses. They will be sent out to families and posted on our website the, this week.
This week.
Sorry, I'm losing track of time. They will, they are done, they will be posted this week. Have you taken any questions about the opening of school report?
A question. With all of the hiring and the movement, I know like at the end of the year with the budget, we were kind of converting like the tech specialist position into, were we able to refill that, is that, or are we?
No, we eliminated one technology integration teacher as a result of the budget.
Yes.
So we do not have new revenue to reinstitute that position. The only additions that we have are the two positions that were state-funded.
Yeah, I didn't know if we were repurposing one of those into like.
We are not, no, we have restructured our tech position in response to the reduction in staff and we revised the curriculum. And our choosing, again, because we are, we still don't have full, we haven't fully secured the funding for the ELA program, we, by repurposing somebody to cover the leave, we will generate some savings for the district. And with the new ELA program and gaps that we continue to see in some areas, we felt it was more effective to utilize that as an integration specialist, and not integration specialist, intervention specialist.
Question on the SAC hiring, is, does it equate to a number of additional children that can be enrolled into it?
We've had a lot of discussions, yeah, we've had a lot of discussions around, there is certainly high demand in the town for before and after school care. There's not a lot of private programs that run in Norfolk where in districts like Foxborough or Mansfield, you have the Y that also provides that service. So a lot of our families rely on SAC. We have tried for a number of years to look at ways to expand and be able to take more kids in. It is not strictly a space issue, it is a staffing issue. We do not have the staff that we need and we ended the year with two positions down to meet the required ratios for the students that we currently have. So we, we can't, until we fill all these positions and have subs available, consider expanding or we'll be out of compliance with the requirements for that. So staffing is the biggest barrier to expanding SAC.
So my question was with these three roles, does that increase the number of students we can bring in?
No, these are needed to meet the needs of the currently enrolled.
Existing.
Yeah, and until we fill them, we have to bring in substitutes or the director might have to fill in for people to meet the ratios. So we're three positions down to meet the needs of the currently enrolled.
Got it, got it, three positions down, so this is just to keep us more or less.
To keep us ready, yes, to hold for what we need to open for the currently enrolled.
Understood.
It is a challenge. We have tried and continue to work with the Department of REC because we, they have been able to offer some before-school programming. They're usually eight-week sessions and we've tried to structure those on days where we have the highest waitlist for SAC so that we give some options to families. We've also worked with REC to provide programming on early release days, which is another really tough time for families, working families. So we'll continue to pursue that, but the staffing is the biggest barrier and we have to have, for the site coordinators, we have to hire people who have a bachelor's degree. That's a requirement of the state and it's very, again, with the split hours, it's been really, really hard. We've been lucky, we have a lot of our SAC staff that have been there for years and return every year, but as people retire, they're hard positions to replace.
Does everyone who works for SAC have to do the split hours?
No, we have some people that just do mornings, some people that just do afternoons, so we do have split, but it still leaves significant holes. You know, there's not a lot of people that want to come work seven to night. It's not a super appealing time, especially because people are getting their own kids ready and after school and we have a lot of families that provide that, staff that.
Question, or more just a clarification for all the adoring viewing public. You mentioned enrollment and having to add an additional first grade classroom. Could you just reiterate for the viewing public, how many first grade classrooms do you now have at the HL of Day school?
Yeah, so this will be the first time since I have been here that we have nine classrooms at a grade level.
180-plus children.
I would have to look at the last enrollment, but without adding the ninth, we were over the class size policy limit for the number of students in classrooms. So I'd have to look at where we are currently, but it is the largest first grade class that I've seen come through the schools.
Sure, I mean, and I think it just, it's clearly this is something that has been on my radar for a little while, but touring the HL of Day after not having been there for several years because, I mean, my son has long since matriculated out of this lovely building and my daughter's almost done here as well. The change over an approximate 10-year period since my eldest child started there with respect to the amount of space and the way classrooms are configured and the way people are working in classes, it's concerning to me when I continue to see the younger grades continuing to balloon. So I mean, just to, I know it's, everyone is doing a wonderful job of making do with the space that they have, no complaints in that respect, but eventually there is no more space to make do with, so.
Yeah, and there are a lot of changes that we've had to make, spaces that have been repurposed, as you saw today, the librarians no longer have an office, they have partitions up in a section of the library. We had to take the office for the technology because we repurposed the technology closet or offices into a small instructional space. So, yeah, we're, you know, we may, maybe we'll do some sort of open house tour for the public at some point because it is becoming more and more challenging.
I think that's important. I mean, just seeing it today, hearing it is one thing, but conceptually seeing how difficult this is and not, I mean, obviously for the children who have to go into these spaces that are sometimes awkward, but also just for our staff to be in rooms with no windows and, you know, it just, it feels, to see it is very different than to hear it and, I mean, we've been talking about it for a long time, but even I was like, oh my gosh.
And I would say, just so people don't get concerned, we don't have any spaces where students are receiving services that don't have windows.
Right.
But we do have multiple staff members situated on the stage where there is no, it's not. But yes, it is, it's very cramped. Just to avoid confusion.
Right, I know, and I mean, I can, I can draw them all day long, but I have the value of perspective, again, I, there were five first grade classrooms when my eldest child went through the school system, it has now almost doubled.
I think we're up, I'd have to pull the actual data again, but I think we're up over 100 students in the, at HL of Day in the last 10 years. I think it's 99 or 100.
You've been very creative with the space you have, but you can only do that for so long. Nothing else to be creative about, yeah.
That's right. Any other questions on the school readiness?
Yeah, excited.
Matt Mallon, our Director of Facilities, shared with the schools in town, is here to give a facilities update, so Matt, I will turn it to you.
Dr. Lardy said we're right on schedule to open up next week. Guys did an amazing job this year. Freeman was a little tougher. We were never able to really fill the 25-hour temporary custodial position. Ended up getting staff members to travel to work with us and the part-time job ended up being part-time, part-time also. That was tough. We lost a guy that worked there for 15 years, he moved on in the middle of July, so that made us even more short. Like I said, everybody managed to pull through and we're looking good. So a few things other than routine summer maintenance that we do. At HL of Day this year, there was a bunch of stair treads and railings around the exterior building that needed repair. The treads wear out after a while due to the weather, they're made out of metal, salt and stuff gets on them. The railings, not as much due to the weather as lawn maintenance and stuff like that. DPW sometimes hits on, they need to be repaired, welded. Sometimes the pieces go missing, so we need to have no one fabricate it and weld it back on and paint it. Something we discovered last winter, luckily it was a snow day, that the generator ran out of fuel at the school and that was due to us finding out that the oil pump that feeds the generator was never connected to the emergency panel. So we had that, we had an electrical contractor come in, tie that into the emergency panel. Then we also had the building maintenance system or computerized system that controls the heat. We also had that hooked up to the emergency panel, so now we can control it from home as well instead of coming in the next day and doing it manually. One of the biggest complaints during all last year over at the HL of Day was, is the playground, the playground's in rough shape. We've been told by a few companies that it's no longer really repairable, we're just wasting our second mind into it. So over the summer, our guys did do some repairs as much as we could. We had leftover stock from all the years, so we used all that up. So we are looking in the future to get that fixed pretty quick.
And Matt, can I just jump in, it's the playground surfacing. It's not the actual equipment, but we have a system called the Smarties system, which is almost like a turf system that's connected that the REC department and Proto had recommended. It's a great playground surfacing, but after 10 years, the seams are starting to come apart where the, where the different types of surfacing meet, which is a tripping hazard. And so they have been, they worked hard to repair that, but eventually we're going to need to look at replacing the surfacing at the HL of Day playground.
Basically the surfing, the surfacing is like a rubber type mat, people refer to it as spaghetti string rubber. The winters up here, you know, once the seam splits a little, the ice starts building up in there and then you can't stretch something, two feet, you pull it back together, so we're seeing that, but we got the major ones this summer and hopefully lasts a little longer. Moving over to the Freeman, during one of our yearly required state boiler and pressure vessel inspections, the water heater in the boiler room here had several discrepancies and they did not pass it. So we had to replace about two B leaf valves. That water heater is on a capital project, I believe, to be submitted for this year. So, because we know for the past couple of years that water heater has been failing.
So that's on for the Fall Town approval of, it's a capital request for the Fall Town.
Back to the playground here, this playground's in pretty bad shape as well, there's holes everywhere, kids, you know, we find pieces up on the roof, we find pieces in the porch. We're finding pieces everywhere all of this, so. We've had several people look at it and nobody wants to touch it. A lot of people told us that any repairs they do, they don't have to, you know, they're not going to warranty anything, they don't want the liability, they're saying the repairs will only last about a year when they do. But this summer, we ordered, we ordered a bunch of supplies. We've done the smaller repairs in the past and the guys are getting good at it. So this year, we, this summer, we ordered a pallet of more supplies, like we took through the bigger holes, so hopefully that goes well, I think it will, should hold up for a year or two.
Matt, you have to wait till the temperature's cool to do that, is that correct?
No, we've started.
You've started, okay.
So hopefully we get a majority by, you know, by the time school starts. As I showed, for those who went on the tour at this building, the expansion joints around the school, the VCT tiles goes over and constantly sinks after a few years, you know, just from gravity weight of the tiles. They don't weigh that much, but they end up sinking after a while, so one of our guys went around and tore up all the VCT in those areas and filled them all back up, leveled them out and installed new tiles, so that gets rid of that tripping hazard. The biggest thing, the biggest change this year is. The biggest thing, the biggest change this year is, oh, wait, let's get to one. As usual, every year, we had extensive repairs. We had some companies up on the roof again fixing the chiller, the rooftop units, getting them back up where they should be, or close to it.
And those, just to note, those four items, the rooftop chillers, those are on the, were included in the scope of the feasibility project for an expansion because they are end-of-life. So, depending on the direction we go with that, if we do a project, it was recommended that those be replaced at the same time so that we don't pay two mobilization fees and pay for a crane to be on site twice. So, but they are end-of-life. Those were expected to be 10 years, and we're going on probably 13 with them, so just so people know.
So, those have been a constant battle. You fix something and then another thing breaks. Fix that, you're going down. So, for district-wide, the new fire station project, over the summer, we discovered, we were given short notice that the fire station is no longer going to be monitoring any of the call boxes in town. Our panic buttons are hooked up to these call boxes at the both schools. So, the way the panic buttons work is they go through the fire alarm panel that sends a signal to this equipment at the fire station, which the MECC building piggybacks off of. So, anytime a panic button's pressed, it goes, the MECC sees it. So, since the fire station's not keeping that equipment anymore, we had to come up with a solution to have the panic buttons go to the MECC. So, right now, if somebody pushes a panic button, it goes to a call center. The call center receives a signal, and then they call the MECC. So, to get rid of that extra step, came up with a, there's an app that goes on your phone, your iPad, your Chromebook called Caliber First Alert. You can configure the buttons to have however you want, and whatever button you push, the MECC has the equipment at their building that you get the signal right away. And you can actually text back and forth with the MECC. You don't have to talk on your phone, so if that's a, if that's a problem where you're in a situation where you need to be quiet, that's, that's a good option to have. So, that's being tested tomorrow. It works off of geo-fencing at both schools, so you cannot accidentally use it unless you're at the H.L. of Day or the Freeman Kennedy. And then we have the option, like, I can tie in to the police chief, the, any other emergency service personnel, we can tie them in so they get alerts as well. They don't have to wait for the MECC to call them. So, that's another good feature.
And I think, Matt, I just want to highlight that this project for identifying a different solution was driven by the police and fire, and so they have been part of researching a new platform that would work efficiently in folding the schools in. So, everything was operational and functional while we were in school, but over the summer there, because of the construction, they're not caring for it. So, we will have everything set before we have students on site that we have a replacement system. But we were bound by working with the police and fire for something that they would be able to support from the MECC center and from their offices.
So, yes, so that will be tested tomorrow. Going to start off first with having it in, like, the offices and the admin offices, but...
Where they currently are.
Yeah. But teacher, any teacher or any staff member will have the option to use it if they want as well on their phones or Chromebooks or iPads.
Those systems get tested regularly, right?
Yes, we do test them all regularly. Yep, yep. The panic buttons, we test routinely with police and fire. So, yes, it'll be the same kind of protocol.
Those are tested the first, first Monday of every month, basically.
Okay.
That's all I have, unless anybody has any questions.
I do want to add that in addition to this very extensive list, like what our custodial staff at their mass leadership does every day is absolutely amazing because in addition to this, they also get requests from, like yours truly, because I have meetings, you set up like four tables with 24 chairs, and, you know, facing this way, and they all, like, they're always like so courteous and so pleasant, no matter how much stress they're under. So, I don't know what the district would do without this team. I think we all kind of, but I just wanted to put on...
And they were short-staffed for the better part of the summer, so.
Exactly, and they got huge panels of ELA materials delivered, like crates. It was just like, like all the little, like, everything else in addition to, it's just, it's an incredible feat of accomplishment.
Thank you for that update and the work. It sounds like a lot, so we appreciate it.
Okay, any other questions for Matt? All right, next, I'm just going to do a quick update on goals. So, if you remember last September, or it might have been October, I proposed to the school committee two-year goals for the '23 through '25 school year, and the school committee reviewed and approved those goals. There are five, and this year, I focused primarily on two of the goals, which were the feasibility study for the modular, potential modular solutions for the school expansion project, as well as looking at any other viable options to accommodate enrollment growth and securing a company to do a new demographic study. So, that was one of the first goals that was the primary focus for this year based on the timeline. I'm just beginning to say, I believe, it's school number four. Yeah. What I did was, all of these were the action steps that were outlined that the school committee reviewed and approved, so I've just indicated the status. We did establish the school building committee. That was complete. We just developed a scope of work for the demography study, and I recruited proposals for that that the school building committee reviewed and selected a demographer. That has been completed and published and shared with the public. We have also had, we had bi-weekly meetings with the demographers during, to provide data that they needed to complete their study. So, that took place back, I think it was primarily in November, December. We have contracted with AI3 Architects to do a comprehensive feasibility study of modular solutions. We looked at four different configurations at three different finish levels. The committee eventually opted to take out the construction trailer level, so there were, there were eight different prices that we reviewed. We are still working to finalize our recommendations, so we're in the final stages of that. I do believe at the September school committee, or potentially October, the building committee will be ready to come forward and present to the school committee their, their final recommendations. School committee will have to vote on whether or not we are opting to submit a warrant article to the town, so that timeline is coming up. We also, Adrian has worked on putting together a school building committee website that has the entire history of the project, starting from back in 2017, so all of the meetings held, all of the presentations. NCTV has been a great partner, has been recording and videoing and broadcasting all of our meetings for us. So, that building site with the history of the project, all of the data, all of the reports, is ready to launch. The committee will look at that at our next meeting, and we'll have that available in September, so that's ready to roll out. We will be talking about, as I said, bringing a potential recommended warrant article to the school committee to consider in September, probably late September, and at that point, then we'll be going forward to the town for next phases. So, as far as the progress on that goal, I think that is, is pretty much complete. We'll be wrapping up in the next week or so. The other goal that we prioritized this year was reviewing and updating all of our district emergency response plans. I think, again, that, that goal is really complete. We developed, we researched and adopted a new threat assessment training and, and model for our mental health staff and administrators to use if a student makes a threatening statement to determine the appropriate response. So, we have a research-based, pretty widely-used model that we are implementing at this time, and we provided training to all of our staff as well as our mental health staff. We, again, published the guidelines and procedures for conducting threat assessments. We have provided professional development training to all of our staff. Within this goal, I've worked really closely with the Norfolk Police as well as the Fire Department, so we have updated all of our emergency protocols, and we've also added protocols for situations that we did not have prior fully-developed plans for. These are mostly non-emergent situations, but things that could happen. For example, we lose power at H.L. of Day, and we have to move students over to the Freeman Kennedy. We need to know who's calling the buses, where students will be staged, how we're going to handle the meals. So, we, working closely with the police and fire, developed full protocols for all of those situations. They are complete, they are comprehensive, and they're consistent with best practices in the field. We had a roundtable meeting where we had many representatives from the police and the fire, as well as our full administrative team, walk through the guidelines, review all the public protocols prior to publishing, and we did distribute, create and distribute new emergency binders for all of our staff. At our opening day, actually, it's going to be September 3rd, we'll be doing a training on all of the new protocols for staff in the morning and moving from there. This information is available if a committee member wants to come in and take a look at the new protocols or information. It is not publicly available, obviously for security reasons. But this has been really complete, the things that we are in process. We will do an overview training on September 3rd for all staff. We also will do, every three years, we bring an outside agency synergy solutions with the Metroleg Police and to do a active shooter training for our staff when students are not on site. We have that planned. That will happen this year. And, again, we do additional training for our administrative team, nurses and office staff, who have different and unique roles in any kind of emergency situation. So, this is all set. The last thing that we are going to be doing is the state police chiefs had a task force, and they developed a published guide that looks at site safety. So, we will be doing, we've made some significant improvements to safety at both of our schools, but we will be taking that resource guide and doing another look. We were really in good shape. I think at this point, I've had several other colleagues in neighboring districts looking to borrow our model to build their plans. I think we're really ahead of the game. I think we have very strong procedures in place, and our site's very secure, but we will be doing another security walkthrough just to see if there's any new vulnerabilities that we need to consider or things that we could do to make the campus stronger. I think you probably all remember, last year, we brought forward a new policy for visitors so that people are triple-screen before they come in. People aren't coming into the offices for deliveries unless it's absolutely necessary and unless there's a pre-scheduled appointment, so we've made a lot of changes to that. So, I think those two goals are really basically complete and just wrapping up. Student learning goal was around the implementation of the ELA program. Vicki worked really hard with our ELA committee this year, researching, looking at best practice, determining which program we were going to be moving forward with. You voted in, got the highlights of that program. It's been purchased. My goal will really focus for next year on supporting the administrators in supervising and monitoring the implementation of that program, calibrating expectations for what best practice looks like, making sure that we're providing proper and appropriate professional development supports for our teachers. So, that's, that, my portion of that goal is really going to focus on next year. Vicki's led the charge of the adoption. A couple of other goals. We, we need to do a review of our district technology program. We delayed that last year because we were changing the whole nature. We didn't want to do the review and develop a plan, knowing that we may have to change positions and we may not be able to fund, so that's going to be a focus for this year. So, I've kind of mapped out what we've done to date. We have been advertising, and I would ask the committee to get the word out as well. We are forming a technology steering committee, and we've been advertising in the May and June school Wednesday words, looking for community members to serve on that. We need to develop policies around the use of AI in schools. We need to redefine what we mean by screen time and what level of screen time's appropriate by age group, as well as looking at our technology curriculum and identifying gaps of where we might need to supplement or make changes. So, that review is deferred based on budget as well as capacity because we were in the second year of finalizing the ELA review. So, that will be a focus for this year. And then the one other goal I think that I have that I will be working on this year is, goal number, maybe I talked about all of them. District Technology is next year, ELA Part Two is next year, oh, Cooper and Climate. So, we are also going to be looking at both of our district, both of our buildings' programs in terms of social-emotional learning. We did a comprehensive review a couple of years ago, and we adopted the Second Step Program at Freeman. We still have open circle at the lower grades. Both schools this year piloted different programs to support positive approach to discipline and to promoting positive school culture and climate. So, at Freeman, if you had students, you know they did the Feathers Program. Staff really worked together to develop that plan within, with Lisa Altham-Hickey, and they piloted it this year. So, and at the H.L. of Day, they focused on kindness, they had kindness coins, they had school meetings, so different things that they were piloting. We are looking at the data and the discipline data from, we have seen the decline at the Freeman Kennedy in response to the implementation of that program, and we will, we also, for the first time this year, or for the first time in a few years, had the students participate in the vocal survey, which is a student climate survey that's part of the MCAS testing. That will give us baseline data so that we can target our review more effectively. But we really wanted to see how these programs, how these programs rolled out their efficacy, how teachers and staff felt before we did the updated review, so that we're making sure that we are responsive to where the needs actually are as a result of that. So, that will be another focus for the coming school year. Happy to answer any questions people might have, and happy to share any of the documents. Again, some of them are available for the public, and some of them would need to be Last item I have for you today is a proposed contract for the school business manager. So, under the state law, school committees are responsible for appointing certain positions within the district, and the school committee is responsible for hiring and appointing the school business administrator, as well as the nurses, which you did at the last meeting. So, last year, we hired a business consultant. We have a different model than many districts. We don't have a full-time business manager on site. We have a consultant who does the, the high-level planning for the budget, and then we have an assistant director who does the processing of the warrant and bill management, things like that. We had had a consultant for many years who left. We hired a new consultant last year, Miriam Goodwin, who had recently retired. She has over 20 years' experience. She was the business director in Franklin. She comes with a wealth of knowledge. We hired her late in the budget process, so we hired her a little bit low last year for the level of skill and qualifications that she has. She's done an outstanding job. I think people on the Budget Committee got to work pretty closely with Miriam. She, I think, is, is a huge asset to our district, and I would recommend we renew her contracts. But I am recommending that we look at a 3.5% increase because she was hired, again, late in the budget and probably at a lower salary than we should have brought her in at. So, I think we need to recognize that in order to retain her. So, other than that, there's no, it's a, it's a service agreement defining the scope, similar to last year with the, the only change being the COLA adjustment.
Well, we're looking for a motion to approve the employment agreement for Miriam Goodwin. So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I think Miriam did an amazing job last year. Coming in hot, under fire, so that was fantastic.
Yeah, she's very organized, also great at explaining things, so very valuable member of the team, so all those in favor?
Aye. And that is all I had tonight.
Moving to the committee reports, do we have anything from policy?
No, we will meet after this meeting, so stay tuned.
Budget.
Yeah.
The building committee.
Ooh. We've met a lot. So, Ingrid gave a very good preview. So, we actually met last night. I think we're getting very close to completing this phase of our work. As Ingrid said, we have looked at three different modular options and two, priced at two different levels of finish in those. Had a lot of really good conversation, especially with our community members, board members on, you know, all sorts of things, building. It's been incredibly educational, thank for everybody. So, right now, we are working with AI3 to come out with final numbers, what it will look like for... look like for the town, when we roll it out, so we can really understand what we're, you know, coming up with a proposal for. So we are, you know, full steam ahead. We will be meeting on the 4th.
September 4th.
September 4th, next, where we plan to come up with our final recommendation. So really exciting stuff, you know, and I think it has been, you know, eye-opening just going through what the buildings could be, would be, pros and cons to all of them. So yeah, I think we're doing really well, and we will be coming to this committee in short order with a full presentation on where we are, what our recommendation is. And then from there, planning to roll out, you know, and we don't have all this ironed out, but community forums, and if we do other board meetings. So we're just really wanting to get the word out once we come up with that final solution, so, or final recommendation, I should say.
It's exciting.
Yeah, it's been a lot.
It sounds like a lot.
But it's been fun.
It's exciting.
A lot of work, a lot of learning.
From King Philip, we approved the five-year strategic plan back in July, and then on August 7th, the KP School Committee has an annual retreat where the school committee gets together, kind of talks about how they want to work together for the upcoming year, and then sets school committee goals that are based around the strategic plan. So that was on August 7th, from 8:30 to 1:30, and we created goals around the pillars of their strategic plan, which were teaching, learning, and leading for all, communication with the community, budgeting and capital planning, and culture and wellness. So it was a great day. It's a committee of nine, so got to work together, spend some time together, have some good goals to work on going forward.
Question on that, you mentioned a retreat, annual retreat, is that common? Do we do that here, being new for school committee?
So I don't know that KP has always done it, but they have done it for the last couple of years. We have in the past had a consultant come in and work with the committee. It's something we've also talked about, doing some professional development for the committee around some of the changes in public record laws, so it's something we're in discussion about. We tried to organize a joint one last year with KP and Norfolk, and we couldn't get a date that worked for enough members. That's the hard part in the summer, is getting people together. But it's something that I think we have done in the past and may consider.
Yeah, for both reasons, the educational aspect, and also the kind of the planning and kind of committee-building aspect to rally around a strategic plan. I like it.
I think that it would be beneficial, particularly if it was focused on strengthening the committee as far as an understanding of roles, responsibilities, lanes, and how those relate to a strategic plan or the goals of the district, so that everyone is, I mean, we're all volunteers, everyone's making valuable but also efficient use of volunteer time, so that, you know, I mean, it's been hard for me in the number of years I've been serving to have to sort of compartmentalize the things that are your parent concerns or individual kind of siloed-off concerns that you have around educational goals or plans within the community, and then also understanding the larger role of the committee, so I think that could definitely be beneficial.
The moderator we used, I forget the company, I can look that up again, but they were really effective, very knowledgeable.
Yep. Did he use Tony Bent?
I don't remember.
Yeah. There's a lot of consultants out there. We just had Tony Bent to do a workshop for our administrative staff, and we also brought in Plainville and Rentham Administrative Team, so that we had a chance to work regionally. And he does a lot of work with school committees, so he might be somebody that they use. There's a handful of people that do the work that are really good, so we could look at.
Great, and just kept the conversation going, it was effective. Everyone had a chance to speak, and it was a comfortable setting where everyone felt comfortable talking, so it was a good use of time, something we might want to consider.
Interesting, good idea.
All right, moving on to new items, we have a school partner renewal application first from the PTO. We are all very familiar with the PTO. It's a fabulous organization in town. It's comprised of volunteers, they put together fundraisers and events solely for the benefit of Norfolk Public Schools, and they provided some great curriculum enhancements and put together some events that are really well-attended and everyone loves, and they are looking for a approval of their application for renewal as a school partner. So I would be looking for a motion to approve the PTA's application as a school partner.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion?
Just a huge, I mean, they brought their A++ game over the past couple of years, the amount of the financial contribution that they've made through gifts has been really remarkable, and the programming has been great. I know they were single-handedly responsible for the family cultural event that happened last year.
Heritage.
Yeah, Heritage Night, I think it was fantastic. It was just a really kind of outside-of-the-box wonderful event, and I think it was widely-attended, so I love that programming, it was great, personally speaking. Thank you.
Now I'm just going through the whole list of all the things they do and contribute to, it's pretty awesome.
And they have been so much, they've been very thoughtful, I think, in planful in trying to figure out what is most effective and impactful, so it's just great. So all those in favor? Aye.
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 So we have a school partner application, and this is a new applicant, so I also had Adrian, thank you, send out the policy that we have to look at when considering a new school partner. So this is from Anthony Fireman, who is the head of Your Next Phrase. And he is basically the boutique tutoring service that helps students pose the learning gap, and offerings various tutoring services in the areas of emotional intelligence, self-discipline, independence, basiliency, high-stakes proficiency testing. So basically a small tutoring service. I looked up on LinkedIn, it seems like a relatively new company, and he started it during COVID, gives up everything in the brochure, where his daughter was struggling, and so he thought that this online tutoring could really help kids, so why don't we put, make a motion to approve his application, and then we'll put it up for a discussion.
Okay. I'll move to approve.
Yep. I have a second.
I'll second.
Okay. So I know there's been work done recently on school partners to kind of narrow the definition of what a school partner is, so that it's more concrete, and we're not just comparding everyone with, that it's not a huge massive list, we have eight.
Yeah, I was going to say, this is, it's an interesting thing, because I mean, as great of a company as it is, does it constitute a school partner, because?
We've never in the past approved people as private businesses.
I was going to say.
What a school partner is allowed to do is send information home through the district to our families. So it has always been a pretty tight criteria of a group that has an exclusive benefit to the Norfolk education programs or students.
Yeah, it sounds like something we could kind of like recommend to families if they were looking for outside tutoring versus like provide, like allowing him access to, like you said, send emails to all of our.
We have a community place on our website where other, because it's an open forum, people can post information, but we don't send things out. So people who are not school partners can post things on the community, like community interest section, but they can't send emails, and that's just housed in a different section of the website. I think something like that could go, but those are all things that we don't sponsor, we don't monitor, we don't approve.
I mean, I don't know anything about this business, so he could have goals or do things as great as, again, I'm sure it is beneficial for the students who take part in it, does it open up our school? Like if we are essentially sponsoring him or saying, this is the tutor that you should use because it's associated in a school partner, like does that make us liable if they don't get the services that they want?
That's also not the role of the school district.
Yeah. No, I don't think so either.
And it's not, I mean, I think it's wonderful that someone wants to start, as you said, their own business, and it sounds like he responded to a need in the broader community post-COVID, and there are certainly private resources that I've even used for my own kids outside of school to provide supports or enrichment, but it does not meet the criteria of a school partner. And knowing that we have local nonprofit organizations that have had their applications rejected because they don't meet the criteria of a school partner, I am hard-pressed to approve a private for-profit business as a school partner.
Yeah. And I know though, in too, like in town, I just know off the top of my head, like so many amazing people who like maybe teach in other towns who also.
Tutor. And if we're saying, this is the one that you use, yeah, what are we doing to other men? Again, like that's not our job, or the school's job to say, this is the one you should use, but even if it were, like.
There would need to be more thought put into it.
Yeah, we'd need to know a lot more, or the school would need to make decisions on it.
There's no, I mean, it's, again, there's no indication of certifications, qualifications, education track record, and so I appreciate wholeheartedly wanting to jump feet-first into something and have a new venture, but it is, I don't think that this is the right forum for that, and so I don't, it's just not an appropriate use of the communication conduit to parents.
I think that's. Does anyone have any further comments on that?
Solidifies it.
Okay, so the motion was to approve.
I had to do that to get the discussion open.
Anthony Fireman. So all those in favor? All those opposed?
Aye. Aye. Did you say I know?
We're not sure which word you.
We are opposed, and therefore.
And then we just have to approve the school committee minutes from our last meeting on June 11th, which seems like a little ago. Grace and Lauren, did you have any comments to those?
No, do you want me to move to approve? Sure. I will move to approve the meeting minutes from June 11th.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? And then our next school committee meeting is scheduled for September 10th. Still works for everyone. Yes.
Yes.
Sure? All right, then I just need a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Adjourn to policy.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You adjourned.